You can't enter his baby.
I've got a bunch of chocolate.
Yeah, no, head kid?
Hey, you know, I'm a little lucky.
Yo quiero con un chocolate, pero no me es con un neckies.
Ah.
They're the best sneakers.
You don't want, like, you have so many drawers.
Full size bar.
I actually do have some.
But I'm not real, so I start.
I would, yeah, I'd like to buy.
Oh, but I am, because that's, yes.
But I like it, it's already middle, I don't want.
Sí, pero vamos a agarrar seis o siete.
I will die in the end, so we know.
They're showing the card.
But, I see, let me take my purse. So where I'm tired.
Harry. Oh, Harry, you're the captain.
Ay, 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 you don't pegar una guanta, pero yo, pero yo.
This is your last one.
So, agarra las dos bolsas.
No, I don't have to.
They're gonna look scary, but they're just like, ah, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's call this meeting to order. Uh, this is the regular school board meeting of trustees. This is Tuesday, June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and it is five thirty-four P M. Uh, for the record, we have a forum. Every, um, member is present. Uh, first section or line of business is a roll call and invocation. Or a roll call, invocation of the.
Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening during the quiet and warmth of summer, we thank you for your constant presence throughout the school year now behind us. We are grateful for the growth, learning, and perseverance that took place in our schools and for the many hands, seen and unseen, that worked to make this past year successful. Lord, we ask you for your continued guidance during this season of rest and renewal. Bless our educators, staff, and administrators with a time to recharge their minds, bodies, and spirits. May this break bring peace to our families and joy to our students as they explore, play, and grow in new ways. As this board meets tonight, grant us wisdom and vision as we plan for the year ahead. Help us to be thoughtful stewards of the resources and responsibilities entrusted to us. Let us make decisions with clarity, unity, and compassion, always mindful that our work shapes the future of the children in our care. Prepare the hearts of our students for the new year to come. Strengthen our teachers with renewed passion and purpose. Guide our school leaders with courage and wisdom and fill our district with hope, harmony, and purpose. We give thanks for this time of reflection and planning and for your steady hand leading us forward. In your holy name, we pray. Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Uh, public comment?
Counselor.
Public comment, uh, communication, uh, anything from President Green?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to close out, uh, the year before we go on break in gratitude and appreciation for all of the hard work and dedication from all of our campus leaders, our teachers, our staff members, employees, that have worked so hard to make this a successful school year. And I wish everyone to have a wonderful break this summer in your travels. Uh, if you are traveling and if you're staying home, may you be rested and not have more work at home. Uh, and just know that the work will be waiting for you when we get back on July the seventh.
Thank you. Uh, item D, consent items, approval of the minutes of the board workshop held on May the sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and the regular board meeting held on May the twentieth, twenty-sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Lee.
Second.
Second by the law of the favor. Motion carries. Uh, item D, administrative reports, finance updates.
Um, Mr. Ramirez, uh, good af, good evening, uh, board members. I'd like to, uh, make a notation on consent items for the record. Uh, we're asking for approval for the regular board meeting held on May twenty-seventh.
Okay. Um, I need a motion on that. Motion by Boy, second by Michael, the favor, regret. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm ready.
Yes. For May twenty-twenty-four, Child Nutrition Fund reflects total realized revenues of two million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and four dollars and actual expenditures of two million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, the last amount of revenue that we can expect from the Child Nutrition Fund, we will, uh, receive in the month of August. And, um, we are, um, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine, um, over expenditures that will carry us on through the, uh, summer month. So we're, we're looking good for the Child Nutrition, uh, fund. The General Operating Fund reflects total realized revenues of twenty-seven million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and actual expenditures of twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. We have an excess of revenues of two million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars as of May thirty-first. Uh, we should expect our instructional, uh, settlement for Foundation School Program for the instructional days in the month of August. Um, we are, uh, short about five point eight million, but that is due to, uh, our settle-up that we should expect to receive in the month of September. Okay?
Which should put us at budget mode?
Excuse me?
And that should put us at about budget mode?
Correct, yes. Any questions? Year-to-date comparative by function. Um, the district had year-to-date expenses from September through May thirty-first of twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. We are five percent more this year spent, uh, as compared to last year, of one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Any questions? Debt Service Fund. The district has received two million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars in actual revenues and expenditures of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The district does have excess, uh, revenues of two point six million. As the board can see, our principal and interest payment that we are expected to pay in August will be two million, six hundred and one dollars and three, uh, hundred and one dollars. And so, uh, as the board can see, we do have enough to cover our principal and interest. And at this point, we'll have about thirty thousand dollars in excess, um, that we, uh, will have added to our fund balance of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Any questions?
Any questions?
Bills, Claims, and Accounts for May twenty-twenty-five. Um, for the month of May, the district paid out one million, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. As compared to last year, um, we, um, paid out fifteen point six-six percent less. Um, the majority of that is, uh, from our local funds. Uh, we're paying out, uh, less bills for the month of May. We caught up in the month of April. So, uh, since our secretaries are out, you're gonna see an increase to the bills paid out for the month of June. Any questions? Bless you. Tax Collection Report. The district received a hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents for the month of May twenty-twenty-five. As it compares to budget, we budget, uh, board members ninety-five percent of our opening levy. At the bottom is our opening levy, that's nine point seven million. We budget, uh, ninety-five percent, assuming that we're only going to receive ninety-five percent in collections from our taxpayer on top of penalties added to that. What we budget as compared to what we've received, we're at ninety-nine percent to budget. Now, how does that compare to our opening levy, our tax collections? At the bottom, you can see our opening levy is nine point seven million. What we, what we have received in current tax collections is eight point two percent. That's eighty-four percent of our levy. Okay? As it compares to last year, we're down in collections about negative point four-eight percent. Does the board have any questions?
Are we seeing, uh, a decline in collection rates last several years?
Yes.
Is there sometimes a spike up?
Definitely. Um, last year, we were at, as you can see, we were at eighty-five percent, and that is even attributed to the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption. Bless, I'm not, sorry. Uh, the hundred thousand homestead exemption, um, that Texas passed last legislative session. So, um, taxpayers are having a hard time paying their, their tax bills, yes. Any questions?
Any questions? Um, thank you, Michelle. Uh, so, yeah, let's go to action, item, uh, F, uh, approval of contracts and purchases over twenty-five thousand.
Thank you. The Department of Finance recommends approval of contracts and purchases over twenty-five thousand. This will be the ninth request of the year, effective June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We're asking, uh, the board to approve two hundred and one thousand dollars in purchases. That, uh, will be, uh, for the first one will be Motorola Solutions. That's gonna be our two-way radios for communication. We will be, uh, paying out of our Safe Cycle One grant. Um, for the second vendor, I put in there numerous vendors, but on the board's backup, um, the vendors, uh, that we are going to pay is Amazon, Walmart, and J C Penney. Um, that is for our hygiene kits and our clothing that we purchased for our McKinney-Vento students. Those are our students experiencing homelessness. Um, we, um, usually, um, we usually, uh, allocate about three hundred dollars per student. And then the last one is our, uh, supplies, um, our school supplies. We're, uh, requesting approval for Walmart and Amazon from our General Operating Fund for the purchase of our school supplies at the beginning of the school year.
Any questions? I need a motion. Motion by Michael, second by Michael, the favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did this include the, uh, the taser? Or is it set up or?
No, it didn't, and I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we, Chief Moya and I were going back and forth estimating and trying to get quotations. Um, I, uh, Chief Moya is out on training this week, and the proposal that I got was about fifteen thousand dollars more than what I had indicated to the board at the board workshop. So I did not feel, uh, comfortable presenting until I talked to him to get clarification on that. Um, I will, though, come to the board in the month of July to request approval because of the mandate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, if not, uh, item F two, approval to submit technical, approval to submit T A application for optional flexible school day program, the Substate Hoc Recovery Center for school year twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. This is good.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ramirez, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Trevino, and board members and administrators. I come before you today to present for the approval of the optional flexible school day program, which is our OFSDP for the school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Um, we wanna do this now because it takes thirty days for T A to approve our application, so we wanna have it ready before school starts in August. Um, it is implemented in our Hoc Recovery Center. We started this last year in, well, actually, this, beginning of this year in January. It's required by the state, by Texas, by the Texas Education Agency to come to the board every year for the approval of the implementation. So, the Recovery Center aims to support at-risk students facing challenges like attendance and credits. The center's purpose is to recover highly at-risk students' path to graduation. The program offers flexible scheduling from seven in the morning to seven P M, Monday through Friday, with Saturday options when available. It features small group instruction with certified teachers, special education support, support for R U Ps, and an administrator. A counselor is also available weekly for academic guidance, including scheduling, test prep, and scholarship assistance. Attendance is tracked via Google Sheets and recorded in our S I S system, which is the sender for summer submission reporting to the Texas Education Agency by a team secretary. So, um, what is some of the criteria? Um, these are flexible, and allows flexible attendance for students meeting specific criteria, for example, at risk of dropping out of school, failing to meet attendance requirements resulting in denied credit for classes, previous P M's dropouts, not promoted for one or more school years, did not maintain an average of seventy in two or more subjects, unsatisfactory performance on assessment instrument, pregnant-related, a parent, and of course, homeless. Some of the requirements for the participation of this program is for the counselors to refer these kids over to the principal. And at that point, the principal has their principal plan in place for these students. And then, of course, they determine whether it's, uh, good for them to continue with the program and move on with the application to get into this particular, uh, program that we have. It allows students to only recover the instructional minutes lost or would be lost during the school year. It provides flexibility in the number of hours each day, with a minimum of forty-five minutes a student must attend. So the student must attend no less than forty-five minutes a day, but encouraging of two hundred and forty minutes a day, which is equivalent to one day of instruction. So we want them there at least the two hundred and forty minutes a day. To provide flexibility in the number of days each week a student attends, to allow a student to enroll in less than one or more than a full course load, allows for recovering classes in the summer, recover credits for graduation, and recover A D. So this year, we started in January, January twenty-second, I wanna say. Um, it was, uh, led by Ms. Elsa Martinez at the Recovery Center. Uh, we had a total of thirty-three students that qualified to be there at the center. Um, we had seven tenth graders, we had twelve eleventh graders, we had fourteen seniors, so we had a total of thirty-three, and we graduated ten students out of these thirty-three students. So we are very proud to say that these ten students could have possibly dropped out. So we were able to bring them back in, recover their credits, um, their attendance fluctuated back and forth. A lot of these kids have a big, um, circumstances, uh, extenuating circumstances that we kind of have to work with on a case-by-case, but we were able to graduate ten of those kids. So the others are, um, in the process of whether they're coming back or to the center or back to the high school. It just depends, once they go through Ms. Nancy Garza and Ms. Elsa Martinez and the counselors, they have their documentation to determine that. And then, uh, we, we have, um, the staff there to, to help us out as these kids do recover their credits in ingenuity. But I wanna say that I'm very happy that we were able to graduate those ten kids. So, um, I, I know that I got calls from parents, you know, thanks for the help and what, you know, I'm glad that you opened something, my, my child, it was working, he couldn't attend school, he was a parent, you know, all these things. So I think this program is really, really good for us. Yeah. So, any questions?
Good job.
Any questions?
So we do have the application, so whenever you all have a chance, you know, yes. And that's it, thank you.
Can you approve?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve. Okay, motion by Lee, second by Michael, the favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, item, item number three is approval of teacher portal for Texas Assessment Program data waiver on a day.
Good evening, President Ramirez, members of, uh, of the board and Superintendent Trevino. We are requesting approval to apply for an expedited waiver for the Texas, uh, from the Texas Education Agency for the teacher portal to access student assessment data through our local data system, which is D Mac. This waiver would enable our teachers to access critical student performance data, which is essential for tailoring instruction to meet individual student needs. Specifically, the waiver will allow teachers in core subject areas, reading, language arts, math, science, and social studies, to view assessment data for their students. This data will support informed decision-making and promote student achievement. The key requirements for the waiver include: the local portal must be accessible to core subject teachers; the data must cover the past five years and demonstrate progress in student achievement; teachers will be able to compare student performances at multiple levels, the classroom level, campus, district, and state; and the portal will also link to the T A website for statewide assessment reports. Additionally, all access to data will comply with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or F R P A, ensuring student privacy is maintained. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the Teacher Portal for Texas Assessment Program Data Waiver, and this is a waiver for the, uh, for this year and the next two years. It's a three-year waiver.
Any questions? Okay, motion by Boy, I see it's approved, second by Michael, the favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, item four, discussion and possible action to approve TASV policy update one-twenty-five.
Good evening. Uh, item F four is the discussion and possible action, uh, to update TASV's, um, one-twenty-five policy update. Uh, this policy is gonna be affecting seven, I mean, this update affects seven policies, and I've listed them there, three under, under our local governance, one under instruction, and three under students. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and go one by one briefly. Uh, and I just wanna summarize by saying the updates to these, the, um, the updates that they've provided in one-twenty-five are, you know, previous to legislative, legislative sessions, so I'm assuming that, that, uh, update twenty, one-twenty-six will be coming soon. That's gonna include more of that stuff. So these are very minor, uh, housekeeping type of updates that you're gonna, that you're gonna notice. Uh, for example, on the first one, B D A A, this revision is, is requesting that the board remove, uh, the sentence indicating that the board may assign a district employee to provide clerical assistance. Uh, this is being recommended to be deleted because it's not common practice, and it's definitely not the practice of, of our district to do that, that superintendent disinates that. So, uh, TASV is recommending to, to remove that portion of, um, of the, uh, of that policy. Uh, next, uh, B D B, this is also local governance, and this, this is a, uh, an update that doesn't affect Z C I S D. However, it's still recommended to put it on in the case that we do, uh, start holding, um, our committees as your boards can. But in Z C I S D, we invite the, the entire board on an open, uh, meeting, and we post it as, as this meeting was, we, we, we have those workshops where everybody's invited. So that's our practice, so Z C I S D doesn't use committees as, as, as B D B references. We, uh, we hold those, uh, monthly public workshops where no actions are posted on those agendas. So B D B, uh, doesn't affect us locally, but it's recommended to update us. Uh, next, it's the same, it's a, it's a po, a policy that was created in, in, uh, to coordinate with the, uh, with, uh, B D B that I just mentioned. It's a lo, it's a new policy, and that it has those, uh, sections of the committees. Again, we don't typically do that in the, in the, in the event that we start holding committees. And for our newer board members, uh, committees in the past have been, let's say, let's have a, a budget committee. So only three of you would be elected by the board, uh, to serve on the budget committee. And then, we would have a policy co, committee, and three of you would, and Bebe, you remember the way that we used to back, back, do it back then? And it gives you the whole breakdown on how to elect those members and all that stuff. But for some time already, we've always included the entire board, oh, those that are, that are, that are available, and the quorum is fine because we're holding a duly, uh, posted, uh, uh, meeting. Uh, the next one is, um, E I is a very minor update, um, where it says that when a student earns a passing grade in only half a course, the average of both halves of the lower, uh, is lower than seventy, the district shall award the student credit for the half with the passing grade, which is practiced right now. We have the average, we don't have, we don't combine, uh, the grades. So if you notice on, on, I didn't say this previously, but all of these, uh, policies are referenced in your packet, starting on page ninety-four. Uh, and that's the only update to that, so it just changes those words, removes, combine grade for, for, and changes it with average of. Uh, on, um, F D E, so on F D E, bullying is added to, uh, the list of offenses, uh, that the district must, uh, collect. All of our principals are aware that we have to start, um, since last year, or, or actually, the previous year, we're, we're, uh, documenting and listing our bullying cases and have to upload that within our Ascender system. So there's a tracking formula for, for those things through, through, uh, Ascender, and, which is our student information system. Bullying was added to that, as you could see in, in, uh, in the, uh, packet that it provided. Uh, and then F E C, it's, uh, revisions throughout this policy are recommended for clarity. It was written in a way that wasn't very, very clear, so they recommended, um, changing the wording, rather than directing the board to establish the attendance committees, it's that, that, uh, that these committees are established by administration. Uh, also, that the methods of regaining credit or awarding a final credit, uh, speci, uh, specifics regarding portion, uh, petitions for credit are recommended for deletion in favor of, uh, to reference administrative guidelines. So what it's saying is that whenever you have a petition to change a grade, you go through admin regs or administrative regulations, meaning the, the principals has their, their, uh, their regulations on how to appeal or, or petition against a grade, which goes to the attendance committee, and then where the principal is also, uh, obviously involved, and that's the process of it. So the board doesn't have that. This is not, uh, when I saw this, I, I was, I was surprised that they took so long to add it, because this has been going on for, for at least, uh, two years that I can remember, is that the, uh, imposing conditions for awarding credit or final credit, when we're talking about recovering attendance or A D A at ninety percent, uh, the law is very specific not to count seat time. So they have to just master, which is cloudy as can be. I, I understand that it can be very cloudy on, on how to establish a way to mass, to, to account for mastery of a subject, but the ninety percent rule cannot be made up by seat time. So if a child misses forty-five days of school, the principal cannot say, you have to be here for forty-five, uh, uh, days for, for tutorials or, or makeup stuff. So you can, it does not equate to, to seat time. And then lastly, uh, F F A C has no, uh, no, uh, change to, to, to Z C I S D. Um, we've already changed this, uh, this, uh, policy in twenty-twenty-four, but it was just part of one, uh, update one-twenty-five. So if y'all don't have any questions, or if y'all, yes, sir.
In terms of the bullying that you added to it?
Yes.
Who determines the, the action was bullying or not?
So the, the, good question. There's a, um, a flow chart that we provide our, our administrators, and, and of course, training, right? But there's a flow chart that makes it a little bit more, uh, user-friendly for the, not only the principal to go through it with their A P or the teacher, but also to actually show it to our, uh, to our parents, right? And we have it posted online, and it, and it directs those, those principals on what is bullying and what's not, because bullying has to meet a legal definition. There, there's a legal definition of bullying. Uh, if it doesn't meet it, it's still harassment, it might be, it might be taunting, it, but it's still against the Student Code of Conduct, right? So two different things, but once it's actually coded, uh, or determined to be bullying itself, then it follows another, uh, another path, uh, for that. But there's significant training on that, that's been around. The, the bullying stuff has been around for at least, uh, six years since David's Law passed, where, where it just went up another level of, of, uh, of standard to, to meet the bullying standard. Any other questions?
Go to the slide where it says about board members participating in the budget.
Uh, the committees?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I also have a question on that one.
Okay.
Does that apply to the safety committee?
Does that apply to the safety committee?
I'm sorry?
This one applies to the safety committee?
Uh, no, the safety committee would be considered something separate. So the safety committee, the president, it's by statute, it's required that a president and one member at minimal be, be present at the, at that meeting. So it's a different, that's not necessarily a committee that's on, on this. I'm talking about budgets, policies, curriculums, those type of, of meetings. That one would be a little bit different. What was the other?
Facilities.
Facilities is another real popular one that we used to do. Actually, it was facilities that we started changing when we went through, through bond 2019. That's when we started talking to all board because we wanted everybody to be informed all at the same time, rather than getting, you know, the three members' account and then kind of sharing it out. So it was just a lot better just to have an open meeting.
So it's basically going to include the seven board members?
Well, that's the way we've, we've, we've just found that that's more practical in, in our, in our framework.
In some districts, you'll have, like, in my previous district, there was six board meetings a month. So you had a curriculum and instruction committee. So the board president would assign board members to committees. So you'd have two or three assigned to the committee, and then all of them could go, but those three definitely were part of that committee, and so then you have different ones.
But no action is taken?
No action is taken. Really, you vet out a lot of the, the items so that when you get to the board meeting on the, on Thursday, then it's just consent. Because you've already, you know, kind of gone through, but we don't really have very much of that, so.
Would, would, for example, a budget committee, would that affect the, like, the workshops? I'm assuming that the committee would work independently and then they would make recommendations, but would still have the board?
You could, you could still have, like, you could still do a workshop. It's really kind of the same, like, you can have a finance committee meeting where you have the whole board present, and it's like a formal meeting where you go through, like, all of the items that Michelle goes through before, and then if there's any questions or changes or whatever, before it goes to consent, the following week at the regular board meeting or two weeks, whenever it is, you know, you can do that, and still have board workshops, so.
If not, I need a motion to approve TAZV policy update 125. Motion by, I'm just saying, by the scale of the favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Item five, F5, approval of the 2025-2026 support agreement with communities and schools.
Yes, sir. This is not a, a new agreement. We've gone through this agreement for many, many years. You all, you, you have heard our CIS coordinator, I think is the, the title that she has, present to us various times as Norma Gonzalez Mireles. This agreement is done annually. The only reason why I wanted to be a little bit more specific and, and transparent to it is that in, in 23, 24, they advised us, and including the board, that the twenty thousand dollar original agreement that had been longstanding, that they're going to reach the twenty-five thousand shared cost in gradually. So last year, we went up to twenty-two, five hundred. This year, the agreement would be twenty-five thousand. But still for one, for one CIS coordinator, which is stationed at middle school. So we're recommending that this, that continuing its longstanding partnership with communities and schools.
Okay, motion by, I'm just, in a second. Second by Michael, the favor.
Thank you.
Item?
I'm sorry, on that last contract, are we going to see another increase next year?
They said they wanted to hit twenty-five. That's it. Yeah, they wanted to hit twenty-five, and that was it. So no, the answer. Yes, yes. But they, in 23, 24, they gave us a heads up that they wanted to gradually increase, and to hit the twenty-five, now we already hit it, so we're going to stay there. Now, I don't know for how long, but we don't anticipate any increase after that.
Do they have any indication of adding anybody?
We can add, ma'am. It would just be double the, the, the cost. So it would be a, a twenty, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, and we can for sure have somebody stationed at the high school or the elementary.
Okay, move on. Item number six, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the district and Avancea for the 2025-2026 academic year.
Yes, sir. So administration is recommending the approval of this MOU. This is going to, specifically, the agreement requires that the district make available four classrooms within Zapata South Elementary and Fidel and Andrea R. Villarreal Elementary, and this is for serving our three, three-year-olds and a limited four-year-old, four-year-olds and their families with, within the district's boundaries. This is already the, I believe, the fourth year that we've been doing this, fourth or, or so. Last year, we closed the Sainosso site because of low enrollment, but we increased the South to two, was it South to two, right? Last year, we increased South to two classrooms, and we stayed Villarreal with two classrooms. So now we have four classrooms in total. And Avancea did share with me the numbers that, that, that have come in as far as what, what we served this year, or what, who they served this year, if, if anybody would like to, to see that. So, for example, three-year-olds enrolled were sixteen, and then we transitioned twenty-four students at the, at, in total. It was sixteen at, at South Elementary and seven in Villarreal, and eleven at Villarreal Elementary, four, four-year-olds transitioning over, and fourteen at the South Elementary. So a total of sixteen plus twenty-four of those students were serviced by, by Avancea, and twenty-two are on the waiting list, list as of now. So the numbers are, are increasing.
Only, do you have to qualify for that?
Yes. No, that's a, that's, it's a qualified. It's a, it's El Lago that took over El Lago, but their, their house, because they continue to have that one for the threes and under. It was the Dora O. Martinez building, and then the, the El Lago one with the other one, right? And then now we have these four classrooms.
And it's based on income or?
Based on income and need.
Yeah, questions? If not, I need a memorandum of understanding. Motion, Michael. Motion, Michael, please go ahead. Second by Michael, the favor. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the district police department to hold the commission of level-three security guards.
I'd like to ask, ask for this item to be taken to the back, since it covers some sensitive information.
Motion by Michael, the favor. Second by Michael, the favor.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now go to closed session. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071, 551.074, and 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. And it is six ten PM. Very precious.
Yeah, it's like, which one do you want?
Just.
Can you take notes?
This is just what it takes for the handle. Imagine, then we have the warm outs, the batteries. And then fifteen eleven thousand for the.
Okay, um, we are back from executive session. It is seven fifty nine P M. And on record, no action was taken. Uh, let's go back to the open session and to uh, item H one.
Uh, Mr. Ramirez, it's actually item F seven. Uh, that was the one that I asked to take today.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, oh yeah.
Thank you. Uh, administration is recommending um, the board to take action to, for the district to hold uh, the commission of level three security guards.
Any motion?
Uh, motion to approve the district possible.
I'll second.
My lead, second my O A, all in favor?
Thank you.
Now I'm going to go to H, H four.
Yes, sir. Uh, and H one is discussion of possible action to approve the recommended candidate uh, as the head band director and the recommended candidate is Antonio Resendez.
Any motion? Motion by Marilva Sazas, second my number seven, okay, it is all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Item H two.
Yes, sir. Uh, this item is the discussion and possible action regarding the restructuring of the curriculum support to include reclassification of the following position, the director of secondary education to the C C M R C T E coordinator. And the C C M R director, department secretary to the C I A A specialist. And lastly, to approve the reclassification of our athletic coordinator to the athletic director.
Any motion? Motion by Marilva Sazas, second my number one, this, all in favor? Here's your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Um, item H three.
Yes, sir. Item H three is the discussion of possible action regarding restructuring the curriculum support to include the opening of the following positions. Uh, the secondary E L A R assessment coordinator at a pay grade.
A motion to approve that.
Yes, ma'am? To approve uh, of the E L A R. And the secondary math. And the Secondary Math Coordinator.
I'm going to go by one.
You want to go one by one?
You're going to do the ELAR?
We're doing, well, it's really to approve both, but we can take each one separately if you want.
Yeah, yeah. You can just make a motion to address the single position. Yeah.
Okay, so let's go, let's do the Secondary ELAR Assessment Coordinator. I have a motion, second by ninety-seven. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, now, I'll go, let's put this, all those opposed, sorry. These are opposed. Motion carries. Then, the second one, the Secondary Math Coordinator. Do we have a motion to approve that, that position? The new position.
I have a motion to table definitely and then we, I guess...
I'll second it.
Yeah. Motion by Boyle, second by Boyle, second by Goad, all those in favor? Motion carries. Are we doing, all those opposed?
No.
Mario, Mario.
Not two of us.
Huh?
Two of us.
Okay. Two of us. Motion carries.
Item H4, sir, is discussion of possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Spata County regarding Los Evinos Golf Course.
I'd like to recommend that be tabled as item.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dugavada, second by Dugavada, all those in favor? Motion carries.
And the last item, Mr. Ramirez and board, is H5, discussion of possible action to approve the district's compensation plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six academic school year as presented.
In closed session.
In closed session, sir.
Which I don't know if you want to specify action or find A or B.
I would like for the, for the, the motion to read one or the other.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve option B.
I second it.
Yeah, motion by Madre Montesales, second by Madre Montesales, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Montesales.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, I, district communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be shutting down the district for the week of July 4th, June 30th through July 4th. We will resume regular operating hours on July the 7th. On July the 15th, we are scheduled to have a board workshop and a special call meeting on that day. The 29th, we will have our regular school board meeting. And then July 28th through August 1st, we kick off the new teacher orientation, and I guess I just need to backtrack, on July 23rd, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, we will be kicking off our leadership summit for all administrators as we kick off the new school year. So, we've got a busy time coming up, but in the meantime, we will all enjoy our break.
So, the board workshop is another finance?
It's a, yes, it's a budget workshop and a special call.
Is that the last one, Michelle?
Yeah.
The second to last.
I would say the second to last one only because we won't have our certified values yet, and I'm thinking by the end of July, we should already have the, the results from the appeal by that time. So, I, I am recommending one additional board workshop.
Motion to adjourn?
No, any questions? Any other questions? If not, please, I wish to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned. It is eight oh six PM. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
That's great.